Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. This is an open meeting. And it is recorded. And we'll be following an agenda. And the first thing I could ask is all the members of the board, have you had a chance to review the data that we're going to be...
Yes.
All right, so we'll start off. Could you read the first application, please?
Approver of minutes, approver of minutes from January 14, 2025.
I suggest that we make it the last agenda item.
Let's do it.
I agree with that. Why don't we do that?
Case number 25 dash two. Application of Kathy Foley for a property located on 185 West Ford, Route 218, parcel four. Requesting a special permit under section 125 dash four of the Adams zoning bylaw to operate a campground in the R1, R2 zoning district.
Glenn, can I make an announcement first, please?
Sure.
We continue. Um, I just like, uh, just for full transparency, I just wanted to let everybody here know that my mother and father-in-law, Christopher and June Sampson are in the room. They live on 52 West Mountain Road. They are not abutters. And their presence here and the relationship that we have will not influence my decision or voting tonight. If anybody has any objections to that, now would be the time to bring it up.
No objections? Thank you for that.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Would the applicant, uh, please step forward and discuss what you want, what you're going to be doing with this property?
Sure. So I put together a little presentation. I'm sorry, the people in the back can't see it. I'll try to... Can see from here. Okay. Go around if they want. Okay. So my name's Kathy Foley. I'm a licensed mental health counselor. I'm the owner of Ashling Mountain Farm. Ashling is Irish. It's pronounced like it's A-S-H. And it stands for vision or dream. I bought the farm six years ago, and today we're coming to request a special permit for our hip camping part of our services. I'm a mass licensed riding instructor and a certified therapeutic riding instructor via Path International. And I'm an instructor for equine services for heroes, which is veterans. Although I put first responders in that category, too. And Christian Rowe is here with me. He's my partner, and he manages the farm and the property, and he operates...
I pick up the poop.
He does. He picks up most of the poop. But that's only part of what you do. But it's, hey, yeah, you do that a lot. And he is the one that operates our hip camp. So specific questions that I will just refer to him. Just, it's worth noting that before we started this, and it, we have been doing this for years already. Mark Blaisdell, who was the health inspector at the time, we had him come out to the farm and after we first bought it, following year, and said, what can we do? What can't we do? What do we need permits for? One of the things we're hearing about is hip camping. And so he looked, he inspected it and said we had what we needed in terms of potable water and toilet services and all of that. So that's an aside. So today we need to ask for a special permit. There's our little farmhouse, at which you would see if you, as you drive up, the farm and the property is up, very up and behind this. And if you're up in front of the barns, that's kind of the view you would get from the house, to the house. Just wanted to let you know a little bit about us in general and what we do here. As a therapist, I also do equine assisted psychotherapy. We do horse boarding. I teach traditional as well as therapeutic riding lessons. And we'll talk a lot about the hip camping today. On hold that we have done or I have had to put aside for now, services in our covered arena, our riding clinics, informal, like fun shows, mostly would be for the families of our therapeutic riders. Most horse leasing, we still have one leaser, we have one boarder. So our full therapeutic riding program has been on hiatus and also the equine services for heroes. This is the nearest and dearest to our hearts. The therapeutic riding program, these are some pictures posted with permission from our riders and their families over the varying span of time. Our arena is now covered, but that was when we first started the program. The EQUS program, I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, but the EQUS program that was for equine therapies and therapeutic riding was in Williamstown, then moved it, moved to Lanesboro, and then another place in Lanesboro, closed just around the time that I was considering learning to become an instructor. And so that meant the need was greater in the community. A Southern Vermont program has since closed, and my mentor, is she in any of the pictures? She's not. Was running a program in Steventown, New York, and last year was her final year doing that. So that program has now closed. In order to have horses that do these kinds of things with people with special needs and disabilities, which is why it's a therapeutic riding program, they often, we have a volunteer base because sometimes they need somebody to walk next to them. I should go back a slide. To lead the horse, sometimes they need one or two people on either side to hold them steady or to be there in case somebody, let's say with attention deficit, decides to like pitch themselves off to the side. And we had a little boy that liked to do that every now and then. So you had kind of horses that will respond to wiggly body or rigid or being off balance and not freak out, essentially. One of the things I did with one of our horses, this is Monty, and in his training, I went to take a despuking class, which was 20 hours of mounted police training by the same, he's must be in here. Here he is. He's the guy who trains all the mounted police for down, for Mardi Gras every year. They have to do, even if they've done it before, they have to go through another week of training for, with their horse and rider. And so they taught us a lot. And to just give you a very short bit of what we learned, so we're going through fool noodles, which if any of you know horses, that can be a thing that freaks them out, walk through smoke, they can't, they have no depth perception, so they don't know the difference between smoke and a wall. So it takes a lot of trust to go through that. And this is a narrow bridge, it's about this narrow, that we're asking them to walk with all fours on across. And some distractions, which you can't hear the sound on. Oh, that's too bad. There's sirens blaring. That's the only thing I have with this sound, so. This is one of the clinics we did, which was also an opportunity. We had three of our horses. That's Guinness, Sophie, and that's Blaze over there. Unfortunately, we lost Blaze this past fall. I have them go through and do all sorts of obstacles, which helps with their versatility, helps if you're on trails or something happens like, you know, helicopters coming through, gunshots, a wild turkey flying into the arena, all kinds of, or a balloon, that time there was, somebody's balloon just drifted across so that they won't spook and take up running. We have two therapy minis. Everybody loves the minis. The campers love the minis. These are actually pictures of our two minis, Nick Nick and Latte. This is from when I took them shortly after I got them to a lecture I was doing at Williams using equine therapy for treatment of trauma. There was some paperwork to do to get the horses in the building for that, but that was a big hit. Unfortunately, what hit right after that, within weeks, was COVID. So they didn't do much more of that since then, up to this point. But they're a big hit. Okay, so these are actual photos of our campers that they posted during riding lessons. This was an aunt who brought her daughter, is this the one that had, she was taking, she was in a therapeutic riding program somewhere else. So this is how she learned how to connect with her, it was her niece.
And her mom had stepped out of her life, so that's why her aunt took her.
That's right.
And she was, she was working to get custody of her. Yeah.
So that was really special. Some kids playing in our brook or section of the brook that's on our property.
That's the first time, I'm sorry, but I, that's the first time those kids ever touched mud, by the way. Their parents were so, they was a bunch of single moms, and they all got their kids together from New York, and none of them had ever touched mud before. And, and they're, she's like, they won't do anything. And I'm like, come on. And I got them all down. I just, here's the creek, go for it. That was, they sent me those pictures.
They had a hard time getting them out of there.
Yeah.
And more campers on riding lessons, going out on the trails. All right, so most of our, the vast majority of our campers and our sites are tents. And so these are actual pictures from over the course of time that we've been doing the program, which is three or so, at least three years now. And they posted these pictures themselves. So these are of some of the upper, these are one of the upper campsites. And we'll give you more information on that later. This is the main campsite, as well as this. There's only one, when I say the main campsite, one that has a fire pit in it. And the clearing actually was, it was already cleared when we bought the farm. We haven't done any clearing or building, and we don't intend to for any of this project. This one place, though, can accommodate a vehicle, small trailer. So these are examples of the trailer or vehicle camping. Can you see that? Give me...
About a teardrop.
Like, you know, little teardrops, or this guy had, on his pickup truck, he had one of those like rooftop tents. They have some cool little things that we've seen.
We tried bigger campers once or twice, and it just didn't work. So that's why, you know, we, yeah, we...
12-foot total from...
There, yeah, there was a bigger camper there at one time, and we decided that that's just not right for the property. So we keep it down to 16.
We don't want them digging trenches. This is, so hip camp, if you're familiar with Airbnb, as I think most people are, hip camp is owned by Airbnb and it's run in the same way, right? So you, the sites get reviewed and the campers get reviewed by the owners of the sites. Christian runs all of this, and I'm going to brag on you. 99% rating of, to date, 131 reviews and the third best campsite and campground in Massachusetts. This is what some of the people have said. Our spot was very secluded. We were able to take riding lessons. We also booked a riding lesson for the two of us and learned a lot, able to ride in the arena as well as on forest trails. We loved seeing the horses and having an orchard so close by. Donuts are heavenly. We send them off for yes keys, they love it. Christian took the time to share about the equestrian farm and therapeutic horses. Opportunity to go to the daily grind for brunch, yum, and enjoy Mass Mocha just minutes away. Riding lesson was fun. Seven-year-old in our group took her first riding lesson while there. Farm's in an ideal location, just a few minutes from downtown Adams, yet remote enough to be lulled to sleep by rustling leaves and a few owl calls. Able to leave the campsite and find my way easily to eat by trail to the trail that leads to some of the, some of Mount Graylock. I climbed the mountain in the morning after I arrived, and in the afternoon I went and explored Adams, North Adams and the surrounding area. Secluded but close enough, I felt safe. Christian also provides potable water and a porta potty. So that's the kind of things that, and it's very typical, I'll go through and look at the review, it's very typical of what our campers do and say about us. All right, so I know you guys have this in your packet, but, you know, ask questions if you need to. Do you want me to read question one before I answer it, or just answer? What do you prefer? I'll just read the question. So the first, special permits shall normally be granted except if the application causes any of the following problems. The first, traffic generated or patterns of access or egress would cause congestion, hazard, or substantial change in established neighborhood character. Traffic won't change or be noticeably impacted. There is no change of activity from usage over the past few years. No change in neighborhood character, no congestion created. Two, if the continued operation or the development of adjacent uses as permitted in the zoning bylaw would be adversely affected by the nature of the proposed use. Our farm has been providing these services for a few years now. Campsites are not visible to the public, the West Road, or neighbors, in fact, along with enjoying farm products and services. Our farm eggs, therapeutic and traditional horse activities. Campers often hike to Mount Graylock and Graylock Glen. We give recommendations, local food, natural and cultural attractions. The vast majority of our guests camp in tents, as I said earlier, and occasionally small trailer, as you saw in the photos. There's no large RVs or trailers allowed, despite, but sometimes people try to convince you that their trailer will work because they saw it in the Google Earth, and the answer is no. Three, nuisance or hazard would be created to the detriment of the health, safety, and/or welfare of the occupants of the proposed use or the citizens of the town. We carefully review all camping requests, sometimes together, you discuss it, and sometimes just you.
We screen everybody that comes onto the farm.
Yeah. Via hip camp, owned and operated by Airbnb. Christian reads the write-ups from other site owners, communicates with them before accepting reservations to ensure that they're going to be a good fit for our farm. And it's important to remember, we live there. We don't, we don't want, you know, people that aren't a good fit, that people are going to be like, doing crazy stuff. That's not, we don't want to be worrying about who's on our property. We want to sleep at night. He declines all requests that may not be appropriate and airs on the side of caution. For other, four, for other reasons, the proposed use would impair the integrity of the district or adjoining districts or otherwise derogate from the intent and purpose of this bylaw. Our farm, including hip camping, we feel meshes well with the immediate and surrounding areas of our community. Adams has a right to farm bylaw which determines that whatever impact may be caused to others is more than offset by the benefits of farming to the neighborhood, community, and society in general. Nonetheless, we believe our little farm, including hip camping, is more of a quiet and fairly hidden gem which provides beneficial services to our community. Our barns and horses are up a hill and past the house to the extent that so many people that do come to our farm say, I've driven by here a million times, and I've never known there were horses up here. Five, the basic design of the proposed use or uses or buildings, the relationships between the building and the, like, buildings and the land, the overall physical appearance of the proposed uses or buildings would not be in general harmony, in general harmony with the correct character of the surrounding neighborhood and would serve to blight or detract from abutting residences or other properties. There's no building involved in this project. Campsites are very low impact. Guests pack in, we go by the pack in, pack out. We do not provide garbage disposal and stuff for them and don't, and have never had to. A lot of the people who do hip camping, they're campers, they know that stuff. So they're super happy to have a porta potty. And they respectfully take all their stuff out, and they leave them really clean. We've never, we've never had...
If you go through their views, we have many, many reviews about our porta potty being nice.
Oh, the porta potty, I mean, the camps.
And the campsites, yeah, no. And the first thing I do is go back there as soon as they leave to make sure, just because, that they leave something to their...
The only person who ever left our campsite a mess was my daughter. Let's see. They may or may not be allowed a small campfire depending on environmental conditions and which campsite they're at. We provide precautionary buckets of water, too, at, at sites, just as a precaution.
We follow Girl Scout rules. So we water at the fire at the campsite. Everything's got to be put out before they leave. There's, there's accommodations for all of that. And hip camp itself will notify the people when there's a fire hazard.
A red flag.
A red flag. And, and we have actually, just when there's been a hazard, I have said, you know what, I don't feel comfortable today, and, you know, it's too dry.
It's been too dry, it's windy.
Yeah, it's just, you know, so I...
Elevated fire risks.
We use, we use logic and, you know, the, you know, and we want everything, the thing to be safe. There's no...
We have barns. Fire is not a thing we mess with. I was also married to a volunteer firefighter for 20 years, and some of my best friends are firefighters, and it's like, well ingrained to be aware of fire hazards. Six, adequate safeguards have not been taken to protect the natural environment. Feel like we do a pretty good job of protecting the environment. We're going to continue our ongoing efforts. No motorized vehicles, ATVs, snowmobiles, et cetera, are allowed through our woodlands. If you were ever to hear motor vehicle, it's going to be our tractor or ranger going out to mitigate a tree branch fallen or do something like that.
I turned down many people that called about ATV. We're a horse farm, we can't have ATVs blasting across our property.
No.
I don't even want them to have it on the property, like, they're like, we're going to trailer it in. I'm like, you know what? Somebody's, yeah, it's just too much of a...
Nope. If it's not a good yes, then it's not a no. It's a why, why yes, not why say no, why not. Seven, all required public services, like water, sewer, schools, fire protection, et cetera, if they were not readily available to serve the proposed development. Most of that isn't relevant, except for to say, you know, potable fresh water is convenient and available at all times to the campsites. We have porta potty services, they are professionally cleaned and washed every week. And their capacity for, is far exceeds any of the visitors at our farm. So we have never had a complaint that they've been overused. Eight, I think this is the last one. The economic effect of the proposed development would result in economic conditions leading to deterioration of properties due to excessive concentration of commercial activity unsustainable in the protected market. My property is 22 acres of woodland and open areas, pasture. Campsites are located within existing cleared sites surrounded by woods outside of utility easements. National grid is investigated and found no issue with the location of campsites in relation to their easement. The gas line area conditions, and I'll show you a picture when we get there, being a perpetual drainage route for natural water flow down to that brook that made that area completely unsuitable and irrelevant for anything we do with this project. Hike across, slash, hike, hike, or ride your horse across it, slash, slash, slash. Okay. Ask questions if you need to. This is the site that Donna and Kyomi so, so helpfully prepared to display to you guys. It is not a stamped professional drawing, as you can see. Because yesterday was a holiday, we don't see the planning board until next week. So we were asking them to waive that requirement for it to be professionally prepared, prepared and stamped. I think you guys all have a copy of this at your desk. I thought I'd also throw this on there because I can give you sort of a different idea of what the farm looks like. Sorry, sorry for the people unblocking, I really am. So this is our house. This is a garage. It's a big garage. And when people come in, it's, when the leaves are in, you can't see it very well, the entrance to West Road is down here. So there's like a little bridge that crosses a brook.
I call it a moat.
A moat, yeah, sure. A little bridge, and then comes up. So campers would drive past the house. Horse pasture's over here, and it's just our lawn, the lawn, horse pastures. When they get up to here, and you'll see some more detailed, like, on-the-ground pictures, they go to the right and there's a stop sign saying stop and check in. So the porta potty is this little white thing here, and, or the, it has a white roof anyway. And the water pump is under this little roof that links, it's two buildings. So it's outside, but it's under cover, so it doesn't feel icky. So there's more fields up here, there's the covered arena. Campers don't have anything to do over there at all unless they have an interest in, Christian is letting them help.
They come, yeah.
Throw hay to the horses.
They want, they want to help me feed them in the morning, especially the kids.
Oh, they love it, yeah. Yeah. Or sometimes take a horse out and teach them how to groom the horse. Yeah, but they're not allowed, other than to get water, they're not allowed over here without one of us, they're not allowed to interact with the horses without one of us. You know, that's another thing in terms of being selective of who stays, you know. Our house is here, our horses are here, campsites are up here, so we really need to understand and not just rely on the cameras to let us know what's going on over here. So once they've checked in, signed the farm waiver and all of that, see where the porta potty is. Christian walks them, they drive their vehicle back here. Christian walks them through, and let's say they're at the main campsite. They drive through, across, and into the woods again. There's a little natural pullout there for a car. They could drive into the site itself if it's not too muddy. If it's too muddy, we won't let them do it. And they can actually drive either way around the fire pit. That's the fire pit you see there.
With a small, that's the other reason for a small trailer, because they can go, oh, they don't have to back up. So a lot of people that aren't comfortable driving a trailer really like the spot a lot, you know?
Yeah, I don't love backing up the horse trailer.
No.
So we went, so that's the main campsite, and then other campsites are in here in the woods and over there.
And those only will have tents built?
Yeah, it's only this one that'll ever have a trailer. In talking ahead of time with David Brian Miller and what he wanted to see on a site plan, he said he wants to know the topo. So there you go. There's a topo map. I'm not great at reading these, but I can tell you that the elevation goes up, steady, goes up, steady. Okay, so this is what it looks like from the ground. If you're, you know, this is us cracking up with the mud with our two halflingers. So this is what you'd see as you drive in. So, this is what you'd see as you drive in and after drive up the road. That's what it looks like in there. Still driving up the road, I guess. At the top, that's what you'd see if you looked down and without any leaves, you can see a little, little stretch of West Road. Okay, back to the, does that make sense where everything is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me, would you point out where the brook is generally?
It's the property line, pretty much.
Oh, Alphannon, it. Uh, where am I going back to? This one, so it comes and goes, you can see the brook. What, it's over there, over here.
So, it, it go, yeah, it goes all the way around, so at this point here, it becomes basically the property line all the way down here, right? So, so it meanders in and out and goes over there and then, um, yeah.
It actually goes this way.
Yeah, right, so.
And that's the gas line, the second smaller easement?
This is the gas line.
And then sometimes, um, we have water.
Yes.
Yeah, like right now, there's a nice amount of, it's, yeah, it's a natural.
Drainage from the mountain, from brook, there are some springs.
We'll never run out of water on our property.
That just bubble up, up there, around there all year long. Um, so when the kids were playing, they're probably over in here. Okay. Alright, so as you're coming up the hill, this is what you'd see on the left. Alright, so the tack room and this is that covered area where the water pump is in. Barns and that's the arena. And then you get to the top of the hill. And we want them to go right, but if they looked left, that's what they would see.
And there's a message that they get from hip camp that gives them all these instructions the day before I wrote it out, so the, the day before, it's hello campers, when you pull in, go ahead, go up to the top of the road and, you know, take a right and you'll see the sign and that's where I'll meet you.
Just cause people get curious, that's what the inside of the arena looks like. Alright, so that's off to the left, they're gonna go to the right, so you can see the porta potty right here. You see the little stop sign. And that's heading, and, but again, this is, this was all here, um, not the porta potty or the stop sign, but we didn't dig out anything for the road, um, or any of the camp sites or anything like that. So, what's next? Okay, so this is the power lines view, um, this is it, I'll give you a couple ones, but this is it in full leaf when most of the camping happens. Um. It's gonna give you a turning view, so you can kinda see where, this is the woods where the camp sites are in. Can't really see them, but they're in there, that's my daughter. Here comes the halflinger. And that turns around and stop there, so. Occasionally, there's that one campsite in the woods on the left, um. These bushes are about, are on like the, I think there's a little fence there, or just rocks. Um, the, uh, that, um, border Cootie X property, this gate, that's his. And then it goes into the fields and stuff he has over there. Gives you a few more views of, this is the lower part, which you didn't really see, and then it's standing at the upper part. You can see specialty minerals over here, um, in the distance. And if these two riders went just a little further and then look to their left, they could see Mount Greylock. It's a, it's the money shot for parents wanna get their kids on the horses to get the Mount Greylock. Or, um, if they're Harry Potter fans, it's Mount Ilvermorni, right?
It certainly is.
Right? So, they think that's the coolest thing, um. Alright, so here's the gas lines. This, um, I didn't put it in video, but this is running water right now. And this is the top where, um, it's pretty dry, it's easy to ride across or hike across this most of the year. Um, by about here. Which maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, Christian, um, the a top in there that the main campsite is.
Yeah, down further, yeah.
Down further and, and a little, and a little more that way, but it starts to get.
About where the mush gets the worst.
Right, yeah.
Where they would come out of the back, but they would have to come out of the back of the, um, campsite to get there and they can go around it easily, so.
Yeah. Nobody would ever mistakenly camp, um, yes. Um, so this is an example from this weekend of the upper campsite, one of the upper camp sites. Uh, you know, if it was in full leaf, you probably, I don't know, you might be able to see him if I, if I'm standing a little closer. But, um, just a nice little clearing that happens to be there, you know, actually, there's.
It's throughout our trail system, basically.
Yeah.
I mean, where, if they're, you know, the flat spots, but we have trails that run through, all through the property, so that area is nice and flat and they can just pick whatever size area their tent will fit, you know.
You, they, you always show them what the options are occasionally, you know, uh, and to ask somebody to move their tent, cause they had a better idea and it's like in the middle of the riding trail, so. No, no, that's not very comfortable. Um, and that's the main campsite, you saw it being used in pictures, um, but that's what it looks like. Um, the only thing we did is, um, provide a wooden spool that somebody gave us, uh, for a table. And, oh, you can see at least one of the buckets here, um, Christian, what, you wanna say what you did on the?
Uh, well, that corner was really wet, so I had, and once again, there was a natural spring, so I did put a piece of, uh, drain tile underneath the edge of that. So, I made a nice camping spot, this nice and flat there and, um, and the water drains it back, you know, to the gas lines, like everywhere else, but, um.
And put our wood chips on it.
Over the side and we could put our wood chips on it, make it comfortable, yeah, so it's a good spot for the tents to sit. And you can, it's flat all the way around, so we had a, a family that had a wonderful family reunion back there. The pig roast was wonderful.
They did share it with us, um, so, as I know, times and schedules and, um, mine, not least of all, made, um, site visits difficult. I promised Donna I would make it clear, so I'm in our little ranger, so forgive me. It's a little bouncy, but this is from the stop sign driving out to the main campsite. And this will give you a really good idea, I hope. And there actually is a camper at the campsite.
And if there were leaves, you couldn't really.
And then I walked, I got out and I walked to here. And I turned around to took, take a picture. So, there's where I was, I turned around to take a picture. And again, with no leaf, um, you can see our round pen. And, um. These, they're big, leafy, I don't know what kind of bushes.
Those are raspberries, there's a lot of them stuck in there.
And usually we keep them trimmed in between so that, um, we have another little obstacle to play with, with the horses, make them go between and do figure eights, but that gets like two big clumps of bushes there. And you can see from here at this time of year, one neighbor. Um, so. In addition to explaining that, um, we'd gotten permission from Mark Lays Dell to go ahead and do this, which apparently wasn't the way it's supposed to happen, but we thought it was. Um, and preparing for, we've been, we're trying to get around to figure out how to actually go about this. Um, talking to Mass Farm Bureau, um, they made me aware of these laws, which I just wanna put out there, uh, cause I think that they're important and they're important for agriculture, and I know agriculture is important in this town. Um, at Master General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Three, Paragraph A, um, regarding subjects which zoning may not regulate, what, what exemptions there are, public hearings, et cetera, et cetera. Section three, no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall reg- regulate or restrict the use of materials or methods of construction of structures reg- regulated by the state building code, nor shall any such ordinance or bylaw prohibit, unreasonably regulate or require special permits for the use of the, of land for the primary purpose of commercial agriculture. Adams is a right to farm town and this section, this I just, the rest of this I got right off the Adams website. This was off mass.gov, this is the Adams website. Um, so for this town, the legislative purpose and intent of this bylaw is to state with emphasis that the right to farm accorded to all citizens of the Commonwealth under Article Se- ninety-seven of the Constitution and all state statutes and regulations thereunder, including but not limited to this Mass General Law. Um. The gen- normal bylaw encourages the pursuit of agriculture, promotes agriculture-based economic opportunities and protects farmlands within the town of Adams by allowing agriculture, agricultural uses and related activities to function with minimal conflict with the butters and town agencies. Section two definitions, and you can see it in its entirety, I'm just reading what I feel are the most relevant parts. Definitions, um, farm includes a parcel of continuous land. The words farming or agriculture or their derivatives shall include, not be limited to, the following. Relevant here is, um, or raising of livestock, including horses, and keeping of horses as a commercial enterprise.
You've done a very thorough job of this, and I don't wanna delay things, um.
Okay.
Does the board have any questions?
I have a few, yeah.
Okay.
Um. Thank you for the overview, that was.
Very helpful.
Yeah, helpful, um. The, um, we have a pretty limited role of what we, we can do and what we can't. Um, we just need to make sure that you comply with the, the zoning requirements for enough of the operation.
Which is what we want.
Yeah, right, um, and one of the things I had a question about was the, the two campsites that are shown on this map are fairly close to this property line. And the, the regulation says that they need to be sixty feet or more.
They're, they're more than say sixty feet.
Yeah, they're more than seventy-five, actually.
Okay, that's good, cause you can't really, I mean, I tried with my ruler.
It's difficult and.
And the campsites are kinda flexible from what I understand.
A little bit, right.
So, that was one question, um. You know, in terms of the right to farm, I'm not really sure how relevant that is in terms of the zoning board of appeals. But I know that there are, it has come up before.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that there is like a minimum amount of, uh, income derived from the property to reach a threshold to be called a farm.
Mm-hmm.
If you maintain that, I would assume that.
Yes, and we're Chapter Sixty-One A.
Alright, cool.
Which, which includes that minimum, um, documented about.
Do you have any plans in the near future to increase the number of campers, camp sites?
So.
No.
The one time where we may do a few more, which this is in the town's best interest, is during maybe a town event. During, and there are special criteria that I put in, I did it for, I did it for solid sound. So, I opened up, I think, twelve camp sites. Four people per car, no campfires at the sites, only centrally located fire that I'm in control of. So, we probably got about nine different groups and, you know, if they're gonna, if, it, we only allow tents, no campers. They, they come in and out, they, you know, because of, you know, and that would be the only time and I would, and I would absolutely, if that were a planned thing, be happy to share that with anybody that wanted that time, I'll put it on the calendar and let them know when that is gonna happen.
As far as I can tell, the, the regulations do not restrict the number of sites that you can have. I ask because one of the special criteria, the, the questions refers to, you know, the neighborhood and the traffic.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so if you had a hundred campers up there, then it's gonna be an issue. If, if you have four, I don't see it being an issue.
Well, it's a question that's been dealt with recently, cause the Glen was seven acres and how many campgrounds were, was gonna be put, I don't, I, camp sites were gonna be put on there.
It's a different district and a different sort.
Well, we're twenty-two acres and we're doing four, I'm just, I'm just trying to, to.
I, I, all I'm, all I'm.
Yeah.
Do you have plans to increase the number of camp sites? And if so, would, can you put, you know, a number on that, you know?
It, it, it wouldn't be any more than, than twenty at the highest level, like I said, it would have to have very, very special, I'm, I'm, I don't put up with too much stuff, too, I like to have a good time and not have people ruin the party, you know?
And it's still, it's, those are people who are going out to a festival, not having one
Right.
where we are, and back to, we live here, I need to feel safe and comfortable in my home and with my animals. And that's the most important thing to me.
Yeah, I wouldn't want twenty people camping in my backyard. Yeah, so I understand, yeah.
It would be, yeah, it's a, a very.
Yeah, and they're not hikers, they would be, like you said, they would be.
But we, there have been these festivals and we have not as of yet been moved to, to do something like that. Um, we're pretty comfortable with
Yeah.
the way it flows. Most of the time, there's one or two camp sites. There are some, you know, holiday weekends, but, actually, it's not always the holiday weekends, it's, there are some weekends where.
And sometimes it's a nice weekend.
They might be, they might be three or four filled.
But our main, I think our, we get a lot of single women because they feel safe and it's put in, many people have given the reviews when they're, um, hiking and let's say that, you know, they're supposed to be out by eleven o'clock the next day. If they wanna hike that day, I say, please, break up your campsite, park on the, park on our property. Do your hiking, so we know you're go, you're coming and going. Don't go, you know, as safe as any parking lot may be, you're a lot safer here, so that's.
That we know if you don't come out, you don't show up for your car, we know you need help.
Yeah, so if your stuff doesn't have to be.
So, you showed us where the portable toilets are, is there just one or two or?
There's just one.
Just one, okay, alright.
We did get two when we offered like twelve camp sites. I mean, there's, it's, it's meant to last a, a work crew of ten, uh, all day site for a week, um.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, when you have this increase of campers, are you gonna increase your porta potties for sanitary reasons?
Yeah, yeah.
If, if you're not, that's gonna violate number seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we did, we have and we would.
And, and that we can move them to a.
We did for the clinic, the.
Yeah, we got an extra one for the clinic.
For the clinic. Seems like, and that was as much for, you know, waiting in line as for anything else, we just thought, you know. We wanted to provide shade.
I have one other, just a little question, how, how you trash generated by the campers, how do you deal with that?
They take it out.
They take it out.
Yeah, it's, it's right in the, the last line of the things, please take out all trash, garbage comes in, all garbage goes out.
Okay.
No burning garbage either.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I've got a little one, I see up in the northwestern corner, a butter is the Commonwealth of Mass.
Yeah.
Can your campers hike up to the mountain that, that way?
Yeah.
Without crossing any of the neighbors' properties?
Oh, yeah, no, we avoid directly, and they, they do that, and there are trails to do that, they do have to cross the water. Um, but that's not a difficult thing to do, um, in hiking boots. And they know that, so, yeah, they don't cross our butters' lands. In fact, we instruct them not to, because the land in the other direction, you know, there's much of open fields, but we say, nope. Thank you.
So when I, you know, when I, when I first got this, when I first came across, uh, when I first got the email, and there, and there was a proposed campground with any, without any type of, you know, paperwork involved, that was, I, I had a, I had a lot of questions. But with the fact that there's only four, four campsites, um, and, uh, and, and it's regulated by, by Hip Camp and Airbnb, and I, and then I went on your guys' website.
Oh, thank you.
And I did look at all the reviews, and, and it was, and I never even heard of Hip Camp before. And for somebody who's camped all across the United States, um, you know, most, and any questions that will have like porta potties, um, most of the toilets are composting or porta potties, there's never really any showers, most trash is pack in, pack out. Some of the, you know, for, like, from Moab to the Badlands to Maine to everywhere, the, with the majority of campgrounds like that, which are, are non-flushing toilets, and have running water, but, but no showers available. Um, Glen, and, you know, asked the questions, um, that, that I had, one of my other, one of my, with the site plan, it, it's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty vague, um, you know, just with, you know, like when it's, with, with preparing the site plan, like some of the campsites, you know, like you would, I would think that you would have to have, like, some type of measurement off the property line, measurements in between, do, like, the only thing, the only, I'm just curious about, when you said that the power company, like, it was verbal, like verbal permission?
No, I haven't.
You, you had, you have, uh, like writ, written permission from the, from the, from the utility companies?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright, that was, that was, yeah, that was just, that was my, my main concern was, you know, like, there is, there is easements and, and how they, you know, I mean, I know it's your guys' property, but there are easements that go through, and how they, you know, I know you guys have to live in harmony together, and how they felt about, you know, camping fires, especially next to the, next to the gas line, um.
There's no fires next to the gas line.
Well, I, then, yeah, but that's, like, that was just curious, because sometimes that would be where, like, you would, like, where, like, a, a measurement from, you know, like, from, from like where the gas line would be to where, where the fire pit would be, you know, and stuff like that, like on a site plan. I know we've talked about like entrances, I've driven by there a few times, and with the tra, I wasn't sure if you've ever had a problem with people coming down the hill, and then people trying to pull in, it's kind of a blind drive, you know, like that, that was my, these, these are just my, my questions, but you answered them, but there's, you know, smaller trailers and stuff like that, so.
And the sections that are, need to be one way at a time.
Mm-hmm.
You can see that whole section, and there's room on either side, at the bottom and the top, to pull aside until the car that's already coming up or coming down passes, and then you can.
Sure, how, like, how far away would you say that, that, that the fire pit, there's only one fire pit in that camp, in that camp, in the, in between all four of them?
No, uh, the, the, the other fire pits were just really small.
Yeah, okay.
Like, like tractor supply ones, and I'm, I'm actually going to make them, uh, design one that's better for, and they're all cooking fires too, so that's.
And how, how far from, uh, from the utilities?
They're, they're off by probably ten or fifteen feet or so, I mean, we, we, the.
Not more than that.
Not more than that, yeah, not, yeah, um, they actually, it's really cool, because they, they, I went up there the other day, and, um, the power company went up there and marked the tree, so they're actually clearing stuff for us to have more room to do this, so. And I'll probably get a lot of fire windows here too, but, um, but yeah, so, they, they're, they're very small, they're very contained, they buy our wood, so I know they're not gonna, you know, they're, they're not gonna stack the wood on top of it, I actually had some guys, I had to ask them leave one time, because I caught them dragging, I logged across the thing, and you learn your lessons, and that's when you start screening a little bit heavier, you know? But I've actually had two people off of the property that were just, I'm sorry, this isn't going to work out for you. And so far now, it's been wonderful, the people have been great, thank you for.
I do like that you, you vet your, the applicants, um, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll show you some good ones. They like to fight sometimes.
Do you guys have, is there like, um, like, is there like, like, for like noise, like, is there like quiet, like, most campgrounds have, have like a quiet time, do you guys have, do you guys, do you guys have like a, like a quiet time, like after nine-thirty, after ten PM? Is there usually, if there is anything?
We don't have anything specifically, um, I, that's another part of my screening process, in process, like, somebody said, oh, well, my friend likes to, you know, play music and stuff, I said, ah, this is not the spot for your friend, you know, go find him.
Spot away from others, so, because he wants to play it kind of loud, and we're.
And, and with the, with the, with, the main campsite is circled in with the leaves, sorry, uh, they're circled in with the, so in the summertime, there's really, you know, not anything that can get out, and then the upper campsites, I mean, you go up a hill till, till it flattens out, and there's that, like, there's no buildings on Cudiak property, it's all, it's all empty. Um, so, there, there, yeah, there's no, there, there's nothing up there, nobody can see anything, we had, you know, even people that have been up there with larger groups, we can't hear them or anything like that, it's all the stuff. The sound balance is weird up there anyway, but yeah, I've never had any problems with that so far.
Uh, just one more question, do you have a limit on how long people can, can, can stay? Is there like a, you know, is there, like, I know some campgrounds will be like a two-week minimum, then you gotta move and then come back, and just like.
We don't have people squat.
I, well, well, that's the thing, like, you know, like, we, like, I'm sure, but like, these are questions that we, that I, I would like to know that, like, it's not going to become a place where there's just people living in charge of something.
The longest we've had was two, somebody stayed two weeks, and I actually booked a week, and then they booked another week while they were staying there, because they said, we don't need to go anywhere else this week, so, I, I would never, yeah, it's not going to happen to the point where it's gonna, it's, yeah, I'm, I'm not going to let that go.
I thought they left for a few nights, like.
No, they came back, no, they came back the, later on in the year to come again and stay there.
For two weeks?
For, no, they stayed two weeks, and then they came back for another three, for another long weekend again.
Oh, is it for another three?
Okay, if the board has no further questions, I'll open it to the floor. Uh, does anybody, uh, that appeared tonight to talk about this subject? Or you just?
I'm a butter to the property, and I don't see, anything wrong whatsoever.
I'll need your name and your address.
David Cudiak, three Tracy Avenue.
Okay.
I own the property next door.
Okay, and you have no?
I have no objection.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you, I hope they have doubled it, so.
Hi, my name is Sarah Lisher, I am a property of butter, um, I am that one house that you can see from the high tension through the woods. Um, I see it out my bedroom window, I've experienced the campers for a few years now, it's had a significant altered, a significant altered peaceful enjoyment living in a very negative way. Um, smoke in my house, wanderers, domestics, um, noise. I've lived in at one sixty-one with my family for almost twenty-five, twenty, almost twenty-four years now. I have photographs, I have, um, proof if you so choose, but might I suggest that you try to find the time to go up and do a site visit. Um, I, prior to working for the town for the last almost four years, I came from the utility company, I worked for Berkshire Gas for twenty-five years, so I am familiar with, um, utility easements, and I find it very, um, surprising that both easements would grant a hundred percent, um, um, allowance on camping in between two valid utility easements. So I would like to see the documentation, I'm not opposed to a campground, I'm opposed to where it's currently proposed at. And, 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 um, to the fact that there's twenty-two acres that isn't being used, that is further away from the utility easements.
Thank you. John, what do you have?
I'm Nick Neuss, uh, live at sixty West Mountain Road, so I'm a near neighbor. Um, I don't have any problems with this, the one thing I'd like to ask is that, um, if this is transferred or sold or something like that, that anyone wanting a campground would have to come before the board again, would have to reapply or whatever. I don't know how you could work that out, um, but I've talked to Kathy and Christian about that, and they're fine with that. I mean, I trust them, but I don't want something grandfathered in that becomes a big campground.
That was one of my notes also.
Okay, great.
And I'm going to ask our building commissioner that question. What's this, if we were to permit this, does it stay permitted in perpetuity, or can we put limitations on it? Like, you can put limitations on it, so if we grant this, you can say until a property is sold, or?
Correct, it's not recorded with a deed.
Or it's supposed to record it with a deeds.
It is.
Yeah, it's a recorded document. And then it's got stamped at the registry of deeds, and then it's supposed to come back to me with the stamp.
Done?
Yes. If you were to approve the site plan, you would approve it for the applicant owner.
Okay, so it's not transferable through?
It runs with the person, not the land. Okay, stays with the person, not the land, but they still record it. That satisfies me too.
Yeah.
Makes perfect sense to us.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anybody else?
Yeah, um, I need to join over, I just have one thing that I would like to bring up, um, as far as wood, it would be best if you could get wood that's packaged and kiln-dried, because wood coming in may be infested with insects.
I'll come to another property, I cut, I cut the wood, I have the, I mean, I have the.
Because I know the state parks, when I worked there, they may have a rule that, you know, they had to buy the wood that was kiln-dried, so that no insects would come, and some people, when they would come in, they would just bring, you know, all types of wood and that type of stuff, that's.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, anyone else? Yes.
Catherine Foster, I live in Adams, and I think, um, this is the.
What's your address in Adams?
Murray Street, I'm out in a butter.
Okay.
This is the sort of project that the town itself is trying to do, we're trying to draw tourism here, agritourism. And we want people to come here and enjoy our great outdoors and our great natural scenery, and then we want them to go and shop, we want them to go have something to eat at the daily grind, and, you know, walk the bike path, we're fair and worthy doing it. We should be like applauding this, this is, they figured it out.
They're here just to get a permit to do something they've been doing already for years and should have gotten a permit years ago. So, okay, I'll close it from the floor and reopen it to our board, do we have any?
So I'd like to ask the applicants about, um, this lady's concern about the smoke. Um, Christian, do you have something you can address with the smoke, because this sounds like.
I, yeah, I take the, I take it very seriously, um, actually, if you look at the elevations, um, the campsite is way higher than her home, I think the smoke that's coming from is, and I've watched it, it goes directly from our chimney, and they're just above us on the other side, so when we have a fire, which we heat with wood, and I wood stove, that goes directly across from them, where we're at, the campsite, for one, it's, I mean, you could probably smell smoke, you know, just, it's a fire, but it's surrounded by woods, so the smoke would dissipate from there, from the house. I've watched it directly, ab, absolutely, I've watched it directly go from our house to, to their house, and, and unfortunately, that, you know, but especially on a muggy day or something, you've seen that, you've seen how it goes straight, but it always goes up. And so that, so that, yeah, and the other campsites are, are just two, three football fields away and another thirty feet in elevation, so. All right, that, that campsite is probably, I don't, I don't want to guess, but it's, it's very high in elevation where you can barely even see anything. So that, I think that would be the issue with any smoke.
We can, we're right on the, um, easement, on the power line easement, you know, it's a great hill to run up, as you saw, we have a lot of fun running up on that hill, um, and I do lessons in that round pen that I showed you, you can kind of see, um, that is between the campsite and their property. Um, and even when they're having fires, I have never smelled any.
No, no.
Fire, even on, doing whatever on the back hill.
And, and I want to say to the point about the easement for the electrical line, so, I, I contact Katie with the, with the, I've been back and forth with her, we actually, somebody actually complained, we had a complaint from the city to both.
The town of Adams.
The town of Adams complained about us camping on this property, which isn't going on, we're not camping on the easements, we don't have fire on the easements, so in part of, like, when I ask Katie, like, what do we need? And she's written us letters saying, you saw it, it said, there's nothing that, I've seen that, you know, we've, we've, you know, we went through it and we don't see any issues with it, there's no letter to get, because we're not using the easement. We're not on the easement, so there's no, there's no, we don't have to ask permission to use our own property like that. And there was an issue, the, for, and it was with a big camper, there was an issue, and we ended up actually calling them at that point, that's, we ask instructions before we, before we usually do things, and we got in a little pickle, and I called them and said, what can we do on the easement line? And Katie said, oh, this, that, and the other thing, she sent me the original, you know, thing, okay, I understand, you understand. We had another couple of conversations about the round pen and some other things that went on, and we're all happy and good, and all of a sudden, she emails me and say, the town of Adams just, just called and complained, what's going on? And I don't think she even returned a phone call to that after talking to me, but, maybe, maybe she did.
There were several, several communications from, um, town official who is our butter, um, and they said, after reviewing the matter, I confirm that we currently have no evidence to support the reported claims.
Does that leave the visibility issue, being able to see the campsite on the second floor?
And, and, and when there's no leaves and stuff, you might be able to see a little bit about it, but when the leaves are in, that's completely, I, I don't even, I have to walk all the way up to the campsite to check if the campers are left, left or not, that's how, like, even to see their cars.
I own, yeah, I picture, I own the eighty acres right next to them, I've never even seen a campsite, so. Pretty good job.
There's nothing in the zoning by law about visibility of campsites or smoke drifting from one property to the other. The smoke, I burn wood, one of my neighbors burned wood, I have bonfires in my back, campfires in my backyard, another neighbor has campfires in their backyards, sometimes it's smoke drifts one way or the other. Um, it's just not a big deal, it's part of life in, in Massachusetts, for as I'm concerned.
We didn't even, the last two months of the season, nobody could have fires, because it was.
Right.
Right, so, so anything that happened was directly from, uh, from our home.
And do you have campers in the cold season when the leaves are falling?
Um, a couple of times, we had some, um, like, his son was going in the military, and it was, it was December, and there was a good two feet of snow back there, and I had to get a ranger and pack them in, and pack their note, because they made this teepee, and I spent like four days back there to send his son off to the army, so that was.
It's only the diehard, you know, ice hikers and, uh, winter campers that are.
And it's an important part of our therapeutic program too, I mean, we, we, our first client was.
Not the winter camper.
Not the winter camper.
Alright.
It might be a board health issue, but that's.
It might be a board of health issue, but that's nothing to do with us.
And nothing to do with us.
That's beyond our purview.
Yeah. That's right.
I, I think, that's, I think.
And I think that you're right. At this point, um, I'll close the public part of the meeting and, um, ask the board if we're gonna make a motion.
Can you?
Prior to that, I have one question.
I, I, yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm, I'm looking for all these questions.
I really have one, it's about, do we want to put a limitation on the number of campsites on this property?
That's my concern.
That's my concern also.
Um, I think that we, I think that, right now, I think everybody, the people that are agreeing, are agreeing to, to a limited number. I don't think that, and, and I know verbally, um, the applicants are saying that we're only gonna have four, but we need, we need to, we need to make sure that, you know, we, we can trust them all we want, but it, it, it has to be, right? It has to be in writing and in our condition. We should put a limit, we should put a limit on, 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 on the amount of campsites. Um, we should put a limit on how many people can be at, can be at the campsites and how many vehicles can be at a campsite. And we should probably put a limit on.
Sizes of trailers.
Size, size of trailers and how long people, people can stay at, at, at this campground. And I know there's ways around it where people leave for one night and then, and then they come back and it starts all over again. But. It seems that, right now, with, with four, four campsites, no, it's, there, there, we, we do have, well, you know, well, one, obviously, there is one of butter. But I don't think that we should allow men, like, like, many, many more than, than, than four, than four campsites. I mean, this is a site, this is a site plan, the site plan that they gave us.
Has four.
Only has four on there. And, and, and it's not possibly five, possibly whatever, the site plan that was provided to us.
Has four.
Only has four.
I agree, but I think that, that, that there should be some flexibility in that. Um, you know. Um. You know, if, you know, if we think that this is a good thing, then, but at some point, the number of campsites controls the number of vehicles, um, that are coming back and forth. And which is, which is, you know, issue number one. You know, significant changes in traffic. At what point does it become significant? What, what point is it down?
And then you have your sanitary issues, and then you have your land use issue, you know, and we're in town, right? So, pollution and everything like that. So I think you're right, Aaron, in that we, we, it needs to be limited.
We, we, like, what the tra, the tra, traffic's one, I mean, it's a, it's a busy road. Sanitary is another, I mean, it's, it's easily controlled. Um, blending in with the neighborhood, that's my only, my only concern is.
And, and traffic.
Right, is, and, and, and with, yeah, tr, traffic, I mean, the Glen is two streets down. Um, but we need, like, I, like, we could, we should put four and then shall not exceed. You know, and, and, and then I, I, I mean, I think, I mean, I, I. Cause right now, this is barely, they're like, I, calling this a campground is, is a, is a stretch. But I don't, what I don't want to see is this turned into like Adams K O A. With, you know, like, everybody says.
No, no way.
They say no, but we, we have to, you know, we have to make sure, right? I mean, they can, we can verbally, we can get all the reassurance we want. But in, in the special permit, we need to set some type of condition.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. So the question is, then, the number. You wanna propose a number?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
I know on, on the print you show four sites. Now, my question is, how many tents to each site are you, are you, uh?
What?
Thank you.
So it's, it's, I mean, there's so many variables.
I have a problem with the project. I was just concerned about, on your site, you have four triangles. But how many tent sites are you allowing to each one?
Uh, they have honest answers, we have to play it later. Um, we mainly get smaller groups. We mainly get singles and doubles and, you know, four people. When we have a larger group, they would go into that, the bigger part, the bigger area. Like the family reunion or something like that. I think the, the highest one we've had, and here's, here's where, kinda putting caps on it, it can get difficult. We have, it's mainly four, you know, they, they get four people in there for only forty-five dollars. So, you know, uh, four people, and then anybody after that is ten dollars. So the campsites themselves are listed, I believe, as a sixteen-person max. But that's just one of the numbers that was on there. And, and the campsites can handle it without any thing. And at the most, there might be one or two a year that would be like that. And as far as the traffic's concerned, it's not like an event where people are all coming at once. And then they're all, you know, and so it's, it's broken down into different things. But, and, you know, what's that?
You don't really have.
They may, they, you're right, you're right. Ultimately, we don't, and in that instance, when we did Solid Sound, some people like different bands and they go in for, you know, so, yes, it could happen. I, yes, it could, there's possibility three, four, or five cars would go. But, and I agree with you, the Solid Sound thing, I would never do more. I, I don't even think I'd offer twenty at this point. I'd probably start, I'd probably do ten or fifteen. And under very special, I would let you guys look at my, my criteria is pretty strict. You might not wanna stay there. Um, but, you know, like I said, you get, like, when I did it, uh, one car, four people only, um, up to like a six-person pup tent. Or, I think I said, you could do either like a ten or twelve, or you could do two fours, or you could do, you know, but, but limited to the tents, to your question, um, by, by the group. So that would just, but that, I, that would be, something would have to be going on that, I, I take my time and actually, you know.
Would it make more sense to put a limit on the number of vehicles? As a book, because sometimes a family of four might all go in one tent, but sometimes the kids might wanna be in their own tent.
Right, right.
You know, and.
Oh, yeah, yes.
We can't, counting the number of tents per campsite.
So you have, so you, you have sixteen people max per site. You have four sites, that's sixty-four people.
Yeah, that never, that would never, if, if it got that full, I would decline. Remember, I screened everybody, so I couldn't handle that business, so I turned it down.
But now you're talking twenty sites though.
Who's talking? Oh, no, no, but, oh, I'm sorry, you misunderstood. For those special situations, there would be twenty sites, each site would only allow four people. And one vehicle. So they would not be able to, they would not be able to have, uh, you know, three or four vehicles coming in. Everybody can't have their own vehicle. They have to, they have to carpool.
So perhaps what we do is we say the maximum amount, we put a limit on the number of campers that are allowed on the property.
Yeah, that's, that's, so like, a lot of camp, a lot of campgrounds, you know, they'll, they'll ask me, how many cars? How many adults? How many children? Yes, no, blah, 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 blah. Um, so if we, you know, lim, limiting the sites, one, and limiting the cars per site, would, would, would be, you know, would, you know, would be, you know, the second one. It's not a, it's not of, it's not of a question of, like, like, my, like I said before, my concern, it's not a question of whether or not the property or the street or whatever can handle it. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's the neighborhood, it's a special permit, we can set conditions, you know, so to try to make, you know, try to fit in and make, make everyone happy, but.
So we don't change the nature of the neighborhood.
Well, that's, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
So let's, let's try to sum this up. Somebody wanna make a motion?
May I ask another question first?
Sure.
Um, I'm wondering about where the cars are parked, the parking for these vehicles. Because on twenty-two acres, there's lots of room for people, you know.
There's a lot of trees there too.
Yeah, and it's kind of a tree neighborhood. And then, of course, we've got the Glen's Center within a few miles. So it's kind of hard to say this is that type of neighborhood or this type. Is this wooden?
What's a farm?
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, can I, can I, um, say something to the board? Um, some of the details that you're getting into, keep in mind that this use has to go to the planning board. And a lot of the details of how this use occurs on the property is really the purview of the Adams Planning Board.
So would that, in, in their purview, that they would control any limits of, uh?
No, I think it's fine if you want to control a limit, but I would suggest it pertain to the number of units or the number of sites that they've requested. And then they've also given you information about special events. So the board for, this is just an example, but the board could say, well, okay, if we like the idea that you're providing for these special events, my gosh, the high school provides for tent sites, um, for those events. So we limit you to two of these events and a maximum of how many spaces, you know, how many campsites? You know, I heard fifteen or ten. So those would be in addition to the four that they've requested. And then you're providing a sense of the intensity of the use.
Sure. Would they, would, would they need to notify the town when these special events would, would happen? Or how would we, like, you know, just, like, or, you know, would, would there be an application for, for a special event? Or would it be?
That's kind of a board of health issue. I would imagine that the board of health would have to issue that for those, you know, those special events. But I could be wrong. So that.
Donna, are we putting?
I'm, I'm sorry, that could be part of your.
Sure.
If you're trying to.
Do the condition.
Condition.
Donna, are we kinda putting the park before the boards here? Should this not have done to the?
No.
Okay.
No, because you are deciding the use. Is this an appropriate use for this property? It's already a residence, it's already a farm, but now it's requesting to be a campground. And so you're saying yes or no, and you're kinda putting just general parameters. And then it goes to site plan and they're gonna make out those, those details.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Can I say one word?
Oh, I just wanted to make a, um, a statement. It seems the overflow of parking tends to be in the utility company easement.
Okay.
We've, we've already been cleared with that from this statement though, so.
But again, you're, you're, you're changing the neighborhood and the quality of living in the neighborhood by door slamming, the large volume of folks. Um, it's, it's, it's concerning and it should be a consideration to at least alter that, alter that, that arrangement. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Let's put together a.
A motion.
A motion.
Well, I, I, I have a draft that I prepared. But one of the conditions of the limits of the number of campsites is still up in the air. And I would want to include some sort of, for now, maximum, you can always.
Can, can we just, I really liked who came up with the person, the, the amount of people. Because, because the cars are really hard, I mean, I don't like a lot of cars. We don't want, we, we ride our horses on that field. I control the amount of cars. And we're less likely, like, if you, you know, I don't even, you know, if we had fifteen at our main campsite, you would usually have another four and four and four maybe at any given moment. So if we said something like, you know, forty people or something, it sounds like a lot of people, but when you're talking about four campsites, it's only ten per kid, right? So you start seeing how that can limit it. But I think the people would maybe be the better thing to count then, cause some people might come late or, oh my God, my ride couldn't show up and my uncle's gonna drive me now. And then it's like, oh my God, the city's gonna beat me cause I have to let these nice people bring another car. But I can control the amount of people because they put that, uh, they put the amount of people and cars on it.
Do you have a suggestion as to what would be a fair?
Good Lord.
Number, for the way you operate now in the foreseeable future.
It's early in the season, um, can we, can we do it to fifty dollars and keep it on the board?
Fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty maximum people?
Fifty people per site? No. You better start digging my grave. No, no, fifty other property campers in total. I just pulled that out of nowhere. I'm just going by kinda what it is. And, and it sounds like we're gonna have a lot of work to do to figure it all out, so why beat, beat our heads against the wall?
Why don't we pull it no more than fifty?
I mean, fifty seems like a lot. But I, I, that's just me, I, I, could we, so, can we agree on the amount of campsites, right? Like, look, can we get through that one? There's four, there's four on this map. So we have to say by the, by the.
Application.
Application.
Well, the application was to continue our hip camping.
Yes.
This is what's there now.
Right.
Not necessarily, not necessarily, can we have four campsites? Can we continue our hip camping, um, whether by right or by special permit? And I call it what feels most accurate to you. But to me, hip camping is no more camp in a campground than renting out your ru, a room in your house is a mo, a motel if for Airbnb.
Yep.
And so calling this a campground really just conjures up something much more traditional, uh, commercial campground, which is exactly the kind of thing the campers who use hip camp don't want. Like, they're not, if they're looking for that, they don't come.
Sure.
To our farm. They wanna see the farm, they wanna be isolated, they wanna, but accessible to places.
Our zoning bylaws do not comprehend or understand the concept of hip camping at all. It's just, it's just not in there. All, all there is, is a line saying something about supervised camping.
That's overnight, like running Girl Scout camp or something. That's a different thing. We don't do that.
All right, Ray, what, tell us what you got.
All right, well, we'll see if we can do it. Uh, so Catherine Foley has applied for a special permit to operate campground on the property located at one eighty-five West Grove in Adams. The Foley parcel is twenty-two acres across two, uh, zones, R one and R two. Uh, I moved to approve the special permit application, uh, to operate campground on that property based on the following findings and conditions. So findings are, number one, no significant, we find that no significant changes in traffic hazards congestion or detriment to the neighborhood character will result. There's a condition to that, and that, and condition one, um, is the number of campers is limited to fifty people. No motor homes, large recreational vehicles, or large trailers will be allowed.
Well, can we say what's large so we don't, is sixteen foot will be included, then I'm happy? And, and is that short enough for you?
Yeah.
I, I just don't wanna run into trouble later on, about sixteen foot.
I would.
That is a vehicle.
So you can say, you know, greater than sixteen feet.
Okay.
That's our rule, unless it is, so, yeah.
Are we right on that?
All right, no larger than sixteen feet, right? That's fine. Okay. Finding number two, the operation or development of a piece of property will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. I don't need consideration there. Uh, the proposed use will not create detriments to the health, safety, and/or welfare of the occupants or citizens of the town. The proposed use does not impair the integrity of the R one or R two districts or adjoining districts. Um, the only condition on that is condition two, that no part of any campground will be closer than sixty feet to a proper line. The proposed use is in general harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, the structure will improve the overall, now, let's see. It's in general, that's it. Uh, there's a condition three, which is campground will comply with building code and board of health regulations. Something about trash, but that's done, you're taking care of that. Finding six, the proposed use has no adverse effect on the natural environment. Finding seven, all required public services are in place. And finding eight is the proposed use will not be detrimental to the economy of the town of Adams. And it indeed supports the official mission of the Town of Adams to be an outdoor recreation destination. Additional conditions are that the special permit is for this applicant only. And there, we didn't fully discuss this, but a limitation, suggestion of a limitation on the length of time people can stay. Two weeks.
Two weeks. Yeah, I think hip cap actually has that on there too, but, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine, two weeks.
Two weeks?
I'll be sick of it by then.
They would be family if they.
Yeah.
And we would be sick of them by then.
So we, I know this is a motion, but we limited the amount of people?
We did.
And, and, and didn't, and, and, but no mention of the amount of camp, campsites?
We have not mentioned that. The application is for four campsites.
Okay.
But.
Should we put that in the condition?
Christian said that they could have up to sixteen people on each site.
Okay.
In that case, it would be sixty-four people.
Right. Yeah, we wouldn't do that now.
That's why.
So four campsites with a maximum amount of people of fifty?
Also, the, the planning boards are going to take a look at this.
Right. I'm hesitant to put the number of campsites in here.
Yeah, I would, I would avoid that for right now.
Because the, and the board of health is going to be involved for sanitation issues, so. So we might be going over our pay grade by going into some of this stuff.
I know, but we've.
It helps us take this off too. Thank you very much.
It's in the middle of a motion.
Question or motion? Do you want to say campground or do you want to say campsites? Because I'm hearing them saying they don't want a campground, but just offer sites for, for natural camping?
It does give a fall, I did have many people that contacted us, say, like it's, because it said campgrounds, and, and they get the plan in their head and they're like, oh my gosh, now who's going to open up two hundred, you know, campsites or whatever, you know, like that? And we all know.
Where they get K O A.
Right, or they get K O A.
Yeah, I hear you're saying campsites.
Is that more?
I think campsites is.
Clear.
I think you're right.
Because there are no playground facilities.
That's, that's, that's a better word.
Thank you.
Campsites.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I don't think our zone, our bylaws have a distinction between a site and a, so it's, I mean, it's called who you want, it still falls under campground.
Camping.
Camping.
District there.
You know, I had asked about cars, number of cars because of the changes of traffic, not to talk about twenty by fifteen parking spot, that wasn't my issue. Was thinking of the traffic in and out. But I don't see that as a problem. And it wasn't the Glendys.
I think when Jay was asked that question about the Glendys, he said, we want more traffic.
Yeah, it's like there's not a lot of traffic up on the Glendys days.
Our folks, our folks.
We have a, we have a motion.
We're in a mode of motion.
We need a second.
All right, we, we have a motion.
I'll, I'll do a second.
Okay, for a second. And in favor?
I.
I.
You and I?
I, I, um, I, I have, I just have some concerns with the, with the, you know, with the amount. I just, I.
Vote your conscience. You want to say no, you can say no.
Or we leave it up to the, to the planning board.
I think it's a good idea.
Go ahead and vote your conscience there, and it's all right, but you say whatever you want.
Um, I, I'll, I'll vote, I'll vote in favor and leave it up to the, to the planning board.
Okay, so it's unanimous. And so what happens now? Decision notice, so you're granted the, the special permit. And decision notice will be put on file in the town clerk's office within fourteen days of today. When filed, a twenty-day appeal period will commence to allow any persons who wish to appeal the board's decision can, can make that appeal in writing. And you will be sent a letter after the decision notice is filed to inform you of the expiration date of the appeal period. And after, after that, you'll pick up the decision notice from the town clerk and file it with the registry of deeds. And that closes that particular subject. So let's go on to the next one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you everyone.
Now comes a part of the motion.
I'm wondering if this was in our paperwork.
Yeah. But this is a better permit.
Okay. You can see?
How are you guys tonight?
Very good, thank you.
Good. So my name's Timmy Ross. Well, first we have to tell me your name.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
You're getting ahead of yourself.
Yes.
Case number twenty-five dash three, application of gold graphics for property located at Ten Center Street, map one hundred fifteen, parcel fifteen, requesting two variances under section one hundred twenty-five dash three of the Adam Stone bylaw to grant relief from the sign regulations found in section one hundred twenty-five dash fifteen B one to allow installing backlit channel there on the face of three sides of the building and in section one hundred twenty-five dash fifteen F four C to allow a proposed signs to exceed a maximum of forty-eight square feet for combined fungations on North and West Streets.
Would you please repeat that?
Case number twenty-five dash three, application of gold graphics for property located at Ten Center Street, map one hundred fifteen, parcel fifteen, requesting two variances under section one hundred twenty-five dash two of the Adam Stone bylaw to grant relief from the sign regulations found in section one hundred twenty-five dash fifteen B one to allow installing backlit channel there on the face of three sides of the building and in section one hundred twenty-five dash fifteen F four C to allow a proposed signs to exceed a maximum of forty-eight square feet for combined fungations on North and West Streets.
Okay. Your case is pretty well explained in here.
I would just, I just would want to say to you that, again, my name is Tim Ross. I own the world, we own the building. What we're looking, what we're asking for is just what the signs were exactly, they've been fifty years. There's always, there's, ours has been signs. We didn't exceed what was existing in the past when multiple banks have owned the building. The electric boxes and all the hardware for the original signs that the bank took off were just matching what was existing. So I don't, I don't know what the, we're not looking to exceed anything that hasn't been since nineteen sixty-nine. There's always been signs on all three sections of that bank and we're matching what was there. You can't really change the size of what's a lot of that signs just because the fascia of the building is not that wide. So you got to keep the, the signs smaller just so dimensionally they can fit there. So before we painted it, it was dark brown, you could see how the signs were laid out. We didn't move any of the electrical boxes that the new signs will get tied into. That's all part of that, that steel. So we matched what was there, exactly.
I don't, our, our, there's two issues from looking at this that I see with your proposal in terms of conflicts with the building code. The number of total square footage and the illumination.
Well, they're always illuminated.
I, I don't know that however they got, the previous owners, you know, did it, I don't know that that has any bearing on, on what we have to do. I don't.
There are any, any business without illuminated sign. I mean, it's been illuminated since the building got built.
Sure.
I, I.
We allow for, our code does allow for illuminated signs.
Not backlit though.
Not like that.
Right, I don't think, does it allow for, is it down lighting or something?
I'm not in favor at all of the zoning, the, the bylaw for the signage. It, it, it says that any illumination needs to be on the sign, right? Not from the sign. And there's also a limit of forty-eight square feet total.
And two sides.
I mean, but it happens, you know, there's three entrances to it, right? We have to light it up and, you know, they, it happens to be on a corner of a building. And on top of it, if you're, I'm sure you're all committed with the property, there's trees literally blocking every, every.
Yeah.
Section of that from the corner.
And also.
We're not putting.
If I were in your chair, I would say you have to have signs on three sides because the building is so well exposed.
Well, you can't have.
It's perfectly placed for people coming down one sixteen.
Sure.
Heading north on eight.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Even coming down Murple Street.
I would.
Or whatever the hell name that street is.
The building's been empty for years, you know, we want to invest in the town and, and we want to invest in the, in the area. It's got to be usable. I don't, and we're asking only for what's been existing there for, you know, fifty years. And it's, but they were always backlit signs.
Allow me to ask a question. What was, were there signs on all three sides of that building when it was a bank?
You're asking the wrong question.
Well, you've been here longer than I have.
Oh, I was here in two thousand four to two thousand seven and gone a long time before I came back.
If you just went to the building, you would see the piping and the box. Because it's metal, so we just painted it. There used to be, the signs used to be longer because of the bank, so they were square, lit backlit signs on all three sides of the building. Again, the electrical boxes are still there with the wires pulled out.
Yeah.
Because I don't, you know, we didn't take them off. We bought the building with that stuff there, so we're not adding anything or asking to add anything that was sized there. You know, I would say.
If, if the previous, basically what I, unfortunately, what I think I have to say is that if T D Bank were here tonight wanting to put those signs up, we, we couldn't allow that. According to our, how they got away with it, I don't know. According to the way I read the bylaws.
Yeah.
And because the, the, the bylaw also says that, you know, changes to these things require a variance as opposed to a special permit.
I don't think that the T D Bank put something on that building that wasn't passed or legal. It's been a ban for forever.
That's, that's very true. It got, it got approved somewhere along the line.
We have a, we have a gentleman here who, who invested in our community. He bought a vacant building. Across the street is a big backlit, right? Backlit Adams Hometown Market sign. Across the street are all backlit McDonald's signs. Okay? Adams Community Bank has one sign on the back, a sign on the sides, and a huge awning sign. We have. Yeah, there's, there's, there is a lot, there is a lot of.
Standard sign.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
And it's sort of like in that one, that one vicinity. I mean, I, I, you know, like I.
I think, you know, I think because the light, you know, is behind a translucent plastic material at some point, we can make the case that this is shielded lighting, you know?
It's, it's definitely not lighting, right? We're not removing the trees. We keep, we appreciate the space. Most offices across the street. We want to fix the landscaping. I think, you know, we're a family business. We have been for four generations, from, from, more from Belcher Town area, but we're, we do a lot of work in the Berfiers. We're not trying to make the building flashy. We painted it because it was in really rough shape. We've invested just to get the building to use it. We've already spent about three hundred thousand dollars to take all the concrete out of there safe, you know, so it's been pretty heavy lift for that, for that building, more than we thought. We're committed to it. We'll fix the landscaping based on the architecture of what it was originally designed and try to make the building fit a little bit more in the neighborhood. But again, the signs are, we're probably going to have to install signs around and I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, one, like I looked at you guys, like, and I know it's, we're supposed to be talking about the signs and not everything, but I, I feel like we, we could probably maybe work with you a little bit here, right? It's a net, it's a net, you guys got two hundred, or two hundred locations nationwide. They chose Adams for one of them. I think that, you know, we could, I, I mean, we, we, we get, you know, we, we worked with Cumberland Farms a little bit. Right? We worked with that pub, the Brookside Pub a little bit. I mean, I don't, like, I don't, obviously, we don't want to make it look like Las Vegas downtown, but I don't think that this, that this will, is there other different lighting options besides, like, we talked about lighting options or sign, sign.
Well, I think this is kind of the dimmer, dimmest, backlit sign that you can get.
Yeah.
And we did that purposely because we don't want something, just not our personality, to be honest with you. We're not flashy. And you're not going to, it's going to be hard to see those signs with all those trees. With that said, we'll have it on a timer, so some of the back lighting, like for the back parking lot with that sign, you know, people are going to be parking back there, right?
Yeah.
So, and the banks behind us have bigger signs and backlit much more brighter than what we have, what we're requesting. We'll, if it's a time thing, so it doesn't, you know, we can shut it off at nine o'clock or whatever, it'll be on a timer anyways, you know? So you're. How's that?
It's not a time. That's no part of it.
Yeah.
What is it, what does it exceed? How, how, how many square feet does it exceed?
Forty-eight, well, the, the limit is forty-eight.
For all the signs?
For all the signs.
I think it's a, it's based on frontage, right? But we have three fronts.
No, it's not.
I think it's based on, like, is it total signage?
Yeah, it's total.
How? Okay.
Yeah.
If you.
If you look at the numbers you gave us.
Yeah.
Each sign is, is a little over nine feet by three feet, something. So you got thirty square feet per sign.
Nine by three, twenty-seven, yeah.
Yeah. And so two signs already exceed the forty-eight square feet. Three signs is way over.
You know, Donna's going.
I just wanted to say to the board that I think the, the key here is whether or not the board can find that this property is unique amongst other downtown properties on Park Street. As you know, if you find a hardship, there can be a physical hardship, some kind of physical uniqueness. Now, is this property because of its location and its shape, does it have more frontages? Does it have more frontages as, than other properties? I think that's kind of the key for the board and it could very well be, um, previous decisions, um, in, in terms of signs.
Thank you, Donna, that's good.
Thank you very much, Donna.
Good insight.
May I ask, um, is this your logo? I mean, is that your business card, your logo front?
Yeah.
So you want to have it with this exact.
What, what hap- we, yeah, just dimensionally.
Franchise, right?
No, we own the rights to the building.
Yes, well, yeah, but Window World, is that a franchise?
It's, uh, we own the rights to the Window World window. It's not a franchise. Our family owns it.
Oh, okay.
Registered to something with an R, right?
Yeah, we registered a logo.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, the building is unique with, uh, with how it sits.
Right. And because of that, very frankly, I'm willing to say, do it.
And we kept the signs very small. You gotta remember that, that.
No, they, they do. It has I appear.
I, I need to say, I, I have no problem with the signs and, or the placement or the, you know, the illumination personally. I think that the, the law that defines how you can pass a variance is, is an issue. And it has to relate to the soil shape or topography of the parcel. And yeah, this is on a corner, but other than that, if, you know, any building in town on the corner has, it's not really that unusual.
This one's more on a peninsula.
Yes.
It is very highly visible from three sides, so it is a special case.
And you can only park in the back.
Yeah.
You can't park in the street, anywhere's around that building, so the only area that we have parking is in the back. That's where they have all parking spots and that's where the, even though it's, it's a frontage on Main Road. Um, and I would just, mind you, we have a lot less signage than McDonald's across the street or the supermarket across the street or the bank right next door to us.
Yeah.
Based on the footage of what's existing, um, I can tell you that there's not a building around me that has what you're stating. And with that said, it is pre-existing conditions, right? It's, it was already, that bank was already built there and it is a special case. It's on, it's on three corners. I mean, um, I, I don't think we're trying to make it look like Las Vegas.
And you say.
Not that point.
No, I was, I, I, that was one of the questions, come as a.
That was your question. You said that, um, I had, now that someone mentioned TD Bank, right? Now I remember their logo and that you say it was the same dimensions.
It was bigger. They had big blocks. They had big, uh, metal, like square.
Yeah.
Signs. It isn't how.
Yeah, just the.
It's like the one in North Adams, right?
Probably, they're probably all the same.
Yeah. Would this be the same as your other locations?
As far as the signage?
Yeah.
It's much smaller than our other locations. But you're limited because of the, of the size, so.
Station.
Yes, so based on the script, we had to make it smaller. Um, we would wanna put it more in the middle, but we, where the electrical was a pre-existing, the boxes. That's why they moved where it is, cause ultimately, the original plan was the centering, but then all electrics already tied there and we just didn't want to rip it apart. And we felt, we'd keep it exactly the way it was.
In a sense, that is like a geographical or the, um, physical changes in the terrain. Only it's on the building. I can see that. Did I miss that plane?
Yeah. I, I gotta read the, I gotta read the criteria.
Okay.
You have to show a hardship, okay? You need your business. It would be a hardship not to have signage.
Correct.
Okay, that, so that's not really the issue. But, and this is something passed down from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to Adams. We didn't make this up. It says, "The hardship is owing to circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape or topography of such land or structures and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located."
I understand. Uh, we've been through this many times. That would be if we're placing a sign on the ground, it is hardship for the business not to be posted on the, on, on the building. I mean, it's, it's a hardship. Uh, without doubt, that, that piece you're reading is for putting signs on the ground, something like McDonald's.
It's a criterion for passing a variance is what this is. It's not.
Maybe this shouldn't be a frontage at all.
We, we've, this is like, every sign comes in, we, we talk, we talk about how, how we need to rewrite, rewrite the signage, right? And then every time we try to pass a variance, Jerry tells us we can only pa- or not Jerry, but he mentions that we can only pass a certain amount before we have to rewrite our bylaws, right? So maybe this is that one where we end up rewriting, we finally sit down and rewrite bylaws so that.
There are discussions about actually rewriting.
Right.
Or at least changing the criterion for signage.
Yes.
From variance to special permit.
Right.
In business, industrial districts.
But I wouldn't.
That hasn't happened yet.
This building was already permitted for this.
Yes.
It was already permitted for this.
And, and my point was the topography of the structure. Didn't you, wasn't that phrase in there?
Not the structure. Structure is the word, structure, the, the topography of the.
This, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not asking you to change anything that hasn't been there for fifty years. And we have to have a, you know, it's a hardship for us not to be able to have our sign on the building. Um, but I'm, we're doing exactly what's been there. We're improving the building. We're putting the signs back exactly where they were. I'm not expanding them. I'm not changing them. Um, you know, we, we vested, we have to have signage on the building. We obviously bought the building based on what we believe is there. I'm not asking to change anything at all that, there's no, nobody's saying that the sign was illegal that was existing there already. So I was surprised that I had to go through this process. Um, but with that said, I, I.
We're surprised to also, we have to go through this.
The sign is, we're just replacing what's the sign is there. If TD Bank didn't remove the frame, I would just took that out, put it, TD Bank could put Window World. I mean, I, we're not adding anything, anything at all what was existing.
We understand.
Yeah. So you're asking me to buy a building and then take away what was already permitted and existing, and that's surprising to me.
It's, that's what I see as, um, a hardship. Did the electric and the bolts or whatever.
Of course, yeah.
It was already.
Hardship is not, hardship is not an issue.
And about, uh, uh, the financial hardship?
I think that's established that not having a sign would be a hardship to them.
Yeah, yeah.
There's already nothing in question.
Yeah, but the additional money to rearrange the electric or, uh, the, um.
The placement of the signs is not an issue.
Could you tell me again where you found the regulation, which one?
It's, uh, one twenty-five, twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Just cut the baby again.
Thank you. I just wanna read it again for myself so I can understand that I heard about structure. What I heard.
For, for the folks that have been on this board longer than me, um, if this was a judicial situation, there would be precedent in that we have signs already existing in town across the street at the, at the IGA, at the bank, at the McDonald's, at the Combs' that exceed this forty-eight square foot situation. So, so, so for my more senior colleagues, can we say that there is a precedent that has been set that we can fall back on to approve this variance using the existing situations in other parts of the downtown? Or am I getting too lawyer, lawyer listening?
Hey, you're.
Can I just ask a question? If the variance was already approved at one point?
Okay, so it doesn't matter if the variance was approved at one point. You're going for a variance because the whole premise of zoning is to allow a not-conforming, um, uh, structure to exist. I mean, to, uh, allow it to continue, but not to condone its existence. That's the whole premise of zoning. So, you know, like if you have lots and they, let's say they reduced down a lot, okay? Uh, per zoning that was written three days ago and was accepted. Um, you can't just go back to the old ways and say, well, you know, the old way was that way, so I still like that for the slot. You have to follow the zoning.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Now, that being said, the board has the option to, to make some, you know, modifications to that a little bit. But, um, the training that I take, take, have taken many times, uh, you're only allowed to pass eighty percent of special permits and two percent of all variances in your community. Now, that being said, again, uh, most communities do like thirty-five percent variance changes. But after two percent, you're supposed to change your bylaws to something rewritten that you want. You can't just keep granting variances.
Sure.
So you can grant a variance in this condition because there, there are mitigating circumstances. But we're gonna have to look at these bylaws soon.
I agree.
Because we keep coming to the same thing over and over and over again.
This, this exact issue.
Exactly.
The number of square feet.
And illumination.
And illumination.
So we have to redo our bylaws and not talk about it since I got here in two thousand four.
Yeah.
And left in two thousand seven.
Well, Amy was talking about so many, a change in the bylaws, but now Amy's gone.
So if we.
Yeah, but we, we gotta deal with this tonight, right?
If we're considering changing the bylaws, and we talk, like we said, we talk about it every time, granting this variance wouldn't, we're gonna, we're, we're changing the by, we're, we're think, we're talking about changing the bylaws anyways. We don't agree with this in, in, in twenty twenty-five.
And the whole intersection's like that.
And the whole, and it fits the neighborhood. He's not putting it anywhere else. I mean.
So it certainly isn't hurting the image, the look of the neighborhood. It's going to improve that.
And we're gonna keep the trees. So we're, we're gonna keep all of that.
The trees beyond our purview.
Yeah. No, but I'm just saying from, you know, if you're worried about the lighting of it, we like the way that that.
We're, we're not really worried about what you're trying to do at all. The only thing I'm worried about is the, you know, the variance criterion is so strict that should you get sued by somebody, you're gonna lose in court if we gave you a variance. And so would we, lose in court.
Well, I think we've, I think we've granted the variance, right? We have control to grant a variance.
That's not how court works in these cases. What the court does is it reviews how the board considered the decision and they make a judgment on that. There's no witnesses, there's no retestimony, there's none, none of that. It's just they look at what the board made the decision on and it was based on fact. They don't actually have a drawn-out case on it.
It's not gonna hurt anyone.
So let's legally, let's legally find a reason to approve this application. If that's a, if that's what we, you know.
So we need to make a motion then.
I mean.
We need to draw up a motion.
Mr. Chairman, again, if I can suggest, um, the hardship owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, no. Shape or shape or topography, no, but shape of such land or structures.
There it is.
I think there you need to, therein is a basis for finding that there is something unique. There is a hardship because of this uniqueness that this property has. Um, the Asher-Wilte Cook forms another, um, you know, passage of people and vehi- um, well, bikes. But, um, the parking lot, as he said, the parking lot, people don't park in front of the building. They have to park in the rear of the building.
So you need, you need signs on all sides.
I don't know. Could you say again, please, where you read that from?
Um, it's just, um, the hardship is owing to circumstances, and I'm gonna paraphrase, relating to shape of such land or structures.
That addresses the number of signs, but what about the forty-eight square feet total?
But that's what TD, whoever.
That we can deal with as a part of the variance also.
Right, but.
Well, that's the, that's why you're, it's the uniqueness in shape of the building, why we have extra signage and footage, right? Cause it's three separate.
If you don't have three sides, then you don't, then you would have a business hardship.
Right, but Massachusetts doesn't say how lo- large a sign can be. The town, the town of Adams.
No, it's the town of Adams.
And what I'm hearing is that, um, the neighborhoods are changing, the signage is changing. Uh, it's a nice-looking logo on a modern building, which doesn't go with the downtown in my mind. I've only been here twenty-five years, but, and I'm, and I'm not saying that's a, a reason to not, um.
We tried to, uh, it was a, probably a building that never matched downtown.
Yes, right.
And when we, we bought it, we were trying to look at the post office across the street and like, and try to lighten that up because it was so harsh with the dark browns and everything and dated, so we wanted to work what was there. It's a, it's kind of a outball in the shape of everything else. That's why, I mean, obviously it was pretty expensive to paint all that, uh, and all the trim, but it, it wasn't so harsh on that corner with the white. Um, the lighting for the signs are softer. We did that purposely, um, because we don't, just not the way our business operates. We try to blend in a little bit more. That's why we're keeping the trees. I know it doesn't matter, but that's, all the landscaping and all those boxes, we're gonna, we're gonna keep, we're gonna fix the way that that was originally designed. So they had those big square cement things that landscaping hasn't done for years. Um, we're gonna fix all that, put together, running along the whole bank building, the bank wall. They built a big planter box that hasn't been taken care of for years. We're gonna put all the flowers and landscaping there, so to try to brighten it up, what looks nicer on that corner. So it's an asset for the town, um, not being just a business that we are kind of fitting into the natural environment as best as we can, based on what the building's style is.
Yeah, following up on what Tim said, my name is Nolan. I'm a project specialist. I'm here on behalf of New York Graphics. Um, we're the ones who are making the signs for Window World. Uh, and what Tim is saying is true, um, you know, about setting up how bright it is, um, you could say. And we've never really had to deal with this in terms of the size or quantity being an issue. Um, we've been to, you know, five or less variance meetings in our twenty-five years of business. So, um, you know, we definitely jumped the gun in terms of making the signs, cause, you know, we do have the sign ready for install. But, you know, obviously, we didn't expect to, you know, have to run into a problem like this. So, you know, any flexibility or anything you guys can do would be greatly appreciated on that.
How bright will the signs?
Um, the LED lighting, it's not blaring or destructive to drivers at all. It's literally.
Well, it's behind the.
Right, it's just to light up that kind of general area of the, you know, square, I guess we could say, of each sign. You know, it's not gonna be super bright by any means and a big point of having.
Wait, 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 wait. Um, are the actual letters themselves.
Yes.
Lighted?
Yes.
It isn't like lighting behind and the letters are silhouetted?
Correct, the letters are lit.
Oh, okay.
So what was there before is they had a big long sign rectangle that was backlit by fluorescent. And then they had a light that was kinda shining down.
Yeah.
Uh, so that, that light that was shining down, all three of those lights will no longer be operating.
Oh, on the three sides?
Yes. They had the signs that were, you know, old-fashioned fluorescent, future LEDs, which are a lot less har- harsh to, um, the nighttime light.
It's kind of glow too around it.
Yes, and they don't flash, they don't move, they don't do any of that. They're just solid.
Did you say they'll be on a timer shut off around the time?
Whatever, yeah, nine o'clock, whatever.
The time dies.
Yeah, it works.
Yeah. It just, you know, uh, in case we're there late with customers, it's more, you know, to make sure employees are safe and leaving. Cause we're not, that's the only lighting on the outside of the building.
No.
That sounds like an important point. It's the only lighting around the building for the evening. Well, we've got some streetlights.
Yeah, but you got all the trees. It's pretty, that doing overhangs, I mean, let's say it's, you're in, like, you know, an alleyway, but.
No.
We want people to feel comfortable.
All right, let's, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this issue? All right, let's, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this issue? No. Okay. So.
Is there any correspondence or anything about it?
No.
I, I changed my mind. I'd like to say something, Catherine Foster. Um, I just think it's great that a business wants to come to Adams. And we can't really afford to turn businesses away. We should be doing whatever we can to support any business that wants to come here and work our town.
Absolutely agree with you.
And there aren't a lot of places you can get windows around here either. That's another thing. Unless you wanna go to a big box or there aren't a lot of places.
Appreciate that.
A lot of buildings in town without, they windows.
How do we do this motion?
Thank you.
Do you have to redo the windows of the old buildings?
So, on the application.
We like to redo the whole building, yeah.
And this, uh, if you, this is what they have to read?
Yeah. When you get older, hands don't work as well, so you just.
I understand that.
What's your total square footage of this sign? About ninety feet.
Versus the forty-seven, did you say?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight is the, there's, there's two numbers. There's the thirty-two foot, which sounds like somebody said, well, signs of a four-by-eight sheet plywood. Make that the law. I have a feeling it's almost that arbitrary. And if that's one for any single sign. But then a total number of signs to the building cannot exceed forty-eight square feet.
Yeah, see, that's like if it's going down Center Street, right, or, or Parks, Parks Street.
It's also, it's also written for buildings at front only on.
One side.
On one side.
Yeah.
If there was one sign, it would be a massive sign, and we would be like.
Yeah.
It's three signs on three different parts of the building, on three separate street, or two streets in a parking lot.
Yeah.
I, I think, I.
Yeah.
One sign would be crazy.
Yeah, so we, let's generate a.
Three signs.
Motion here. All right.
Yeah.
How do we mo- generate a motion here?
One question. In our motion, do we have to fi- say our findings? Or the, the, we have to, we have to say why because of our three, our three findings?
Do your three findings, yeah.
Why, okay. All right, so what, so what is fini- so just, so we can do this legally, okay? What would be our first, what, Ray, what's our, what's the first, what's the first finding?
Uh, hardship, I think. Yeah, yeah.
Because of the shape of the building and being.
That's the second finding, though, right?
Yeah.
So finding one would be a, would be a hardship?
It would be a, it would be a, a, a financial or otherwise hardship to the petitioner.
Sure.
Yes.
So it'd be a hardship to not have a si- a, a sign large enough to.
For that and further business, yeah. Further functioning business. And because that hardship is owing to the circumstance that, of the shape of the lot and structure in relationship to the streets.
Street and parking area?
You know, three signs are, um, required to, um, compensate for that.
Yeah.
To eliminate that hardship. Because the building is essentially an insular.
Would that be two sides as well as the parking area?
Yeah, so the, so the building is essentially an insular coming jutting out.
They want customers to go into the parking lot and know where to go.
Yeah.
Right, you know, I mean, it's just obvious that they need the sign over the entry door in the, near the parking lot.
What's the third one that we, we have to meet?
Um, let's see, desirable relief may be granted.
Oh, no substantial detriment to the public good and does not nullify a substantial derogation intended purposes of this chapter.
So, and it meets, it matches the surrounding signs from the, the surrounding, it ma- it matches the neighborhood?
It's consistent.
Say consistent?
It's consistent with, yeah, signs in a, in a business district.
Yeah, consistent.
Surrounding buildings and signs?
Yeah.
And there's definitely no detrimental public good, an advantage to the public good. And we need businesses in the, of heckups.
We're excited. My niece is gonna move up here. She's gonna buy Alton Adams.
All right. She'll find old windows.
She loves homes.
She loves it up here, yeah. One of the driving factors of why we buy.
You need shoes there.
Okay, so, do you have something, Aaron?
I, yeah, should I, I can, I'm gonna stumble through this motion. Because that's what I, that's what I do the best.
You're the man.
And so, um, I make a motion to approve the application of case number twenty-five dash three of Go Graphics for relocated at ten Center Street, map one fifteen, parcel fifteen, requesting two variances under one twenty-five dash three of the Adams zoning bylaws to grant relief from sign regulations found in one twenty-five dash fifteen B to allow installing backlit channel letter signs on the face of three sides of the building and in one twenty-five dash fifteen to allow for proposed signs to exceed a maximum of forty-eight square feet combined frontage on more than one street under these three findings. One, uh, it would be a hardship to the business to not have visible signs from the street. Two, the shape and lot structure would require three signs. One on Park Street, one on Center Street, and one from the parking lot. And three, it is consistent with the surrounding buildings and signs in the ne- in the neighborhood.
Um.
I don't think that's Park Street.
Center Street is Park Street.
Well, it's Center, no, Park Street, parking lot, right?
And the other one's Myrtle?
Let's find out.
No, it's in the center, sorry.
It's ten Center.
Depot is where the blocks are, Depot is where George had that most.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Then let me, can I, then, I'll amend the three streets. I'm sorry, what, Park Street doesn't come from the lights and go that way?
Here, Myrtle Street.
Yeah.
Myrtle Street.
Okay, so Park Street, Myrtle Street, and the parking lot.
Yeah, because Depot Street comes up.
Do you amend that from Park Street?
Is it Center?
Um, it looks like.
It's either.
The center goes from the railroad track to the, the traffic light.
All right, okay.
It's, it's ridiculous.
It's three, it's ten Center Street though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, then what's where, where, what's across the street from the, what's in between the library?
Now you got me.
In between the, 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 the post office and, and Window World?
That's, that's Park Street.
That's Center.
That's Center Street.
Oh, that's Center?
That's Center.
That's Center Street.
Oh.
Center Street. And how long if you live here? The way. And you're the newest?
That's, that's.
Where's Park Street start?
Park Street starts over the river.
Yeah. Yeah. Starts at the actual, with the trail.
May I?
That's, I wanna go for that. Hey, hey, let me just, let me just, okay, so, so Center Street, Myrtle.
Myrtle Street.
And the parking lot, okay, we'll put that, all right, sorry. The road starts over the river. Okay, so there's, that is my motion. That's my motion.
Perfect.
Just, just could I recommend not the neighborhood, but you mean the business district or, um, surrounding area or something like that?
Yeah, in the district, the third thing.
Yeah, consistent with the surrounding buildings and signs, uh, I guess in the, in the, in the business, in the business district or neighborhood.
It's in that area. I mean, I wouldn't say the business district because that could be everything.
Right, yeah, so in the, in the surrounding areas of those two streets that just.
Surround intersection, I've had surrounding intersection.
Okay, in the surrounding intersection.
Okay.
Surrounding.
We got a motion.
I second the motion.
We got a second, and all in favor?
All right, all right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, you're welcome.
There was a struggle.
Thank you very much, guys.
This was a struggle.
Sorry for that. It's good, we talked it through, right? Thank you, sir.
We are very happy to have you.
Replacement skylight, Detroit.
I'll come to talk to you when you have. Yeah, yeah. We'll be working on that, don't leave in the next couple months.
Wonderful.
Thank you, thank you.
We are very happy to have you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So.
Good night, I'll go back here.
I wonder if that's a copy of the minutes for the last.
It's in there. You, you were in here, so you're human of the recusing. Here's, here's the, here's the minutes from January.
Well, I have a nice trip to review it, so.
I will.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Of course I have. Because I would, you know, so I should have known.
I've never knew that.
We're always looking for people to, to be alternative, alternates.
Yeah.
And if you enjoyed tonight's show. We'd be very happy.
Possible.
reaching to the fire, though.
I only have one little tiny grammatical correction. Towards the end, it says, uh, second, well, this printout, the second paragraph from the top. Chairman Ryan, Ryan Miller shared the board members, the applicant, and the public.
Shared, shared with?
With?
Yes. Should insert the word with between shared and the.
Shared with the board members.
Shared with the board members.
I think we should approve those minutes.
I second.
Okay, well, uh, I make a motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good to me, too.
All right.
You know, I abstained from it. Okay, then it's probably time to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Well, technically, we have to vote on the motion that was just made.
But didn't you just do that between?
Which motion, to, to adjourn?
Prove the, no, prove the minutes. So we, you say all in favor?
All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Yeah.
All right.
Good.
And in case nobody did, I second the motion.
May, may I know who dates the second?
Rated.
I'd say.
Oh, anyway.
All right, so now, now we can have a motion to adjourn, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I am.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask to ask?
All right. Go ahead.
All in favor? Aye.